Call the Broken Arrow City Council meeting to order. We have invocation by Chaplain Palin.
Would you pray with me, please? Giver of all life and breath, we come to you today knowing that every day we have an opportunity to begin anew with you. What we did yesterday can be forgiven, a new start given each morning. We especially acknowledge that this is the first council meeting of the new year 2024. Allow the thoughts, words, and actions of each gathered here and watching to be guided by a sense of being one of your created children. As you forgive us for our shortcomings, allow us to extend that graciousness to all those with whom we come into contact. I give you thanks tonight for the mayor, the vice mayor, the city manager, and the city councilors. They serve as the core leadership for Broken Arrow. Bless them with wisdom and courage, with knowledge of the great responsibility that they have to impact in a positive manner all of those who call Broken Arrow their home. Allow the decisions made tonight to be reflective of all constituents of Broken Arrow, not just a few privileged individuals. I remind them of the mantle of leadership that they carry for the entire community. I give you thanks tonight for their first responders, police, fire, dispatch, and others who constantly put their entire being on line for the good of the community. Bless them and their families as they go out, day by day, night by night, to serve and protect the community of Broken Arrow. Finally, I ask you to bless the community of Broken Arrow. Allow us to truly be neighbors to one another, not just physically, but also wanting together to be a strong community for the good and well-being of each other. Allow us to be indifferent to color, ethnicity, gender, and economic background. Allow us all to embrace one another as children of the creating God who made us for relationship with the God and our neighbor. Allow us to be constantly aware of your grace and love for us and your neighbors. May we all give thanks to the one creating, redeeming, and sustaining God. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, ma'am. Roll call.
Green.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Gillespie.
Here.
Wimpy.
Here. We have items O and P to be... Oh, I am so sorry. Moving right along. Please stand and join Councilor Parks in the pledge of allegiance.
Salute pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sorry about that. All right, okay. So we have items O and P to be tabled for discussion.
Q.
Wow, O and Q. Are there any other items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda minus items O and Q.
Second. The motion and a second roll call. Record. All right, item O is approval of a conditional final plat, Home Two Suites on 2.92 acres, located at North Elm Place and 61st Street. Is there someone that was going to discuss this?
I asked for this item to be removed, not because I'm against the item in general. I just, I wanted to make sure that, that, that traffic concerns have been addressed and because it, it's so crazy right there. And it looked like the only place that it, I wasn't sure where the entrance would be if it's so.
It's right there by Bass Pro Shop.
Yeah, but yeah, I think that's, I think that's, the entrance would be at the Bass Pro Road or, I don't know.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Mr. Spurgeon, Grant Rusler, Community Development. I'm here to speak on behalf of the questions that were sent earlier on this item. You are correct, it is behind the Holiday Inn. It's located along Bass Pro Drive, not Albany there. So this area's been zoned as commercial heavy, so this is an appropriate use for that property. I did take the liberty earlier today to pull up some information from INCOG and was able to get an average annual daily for 2022 was the most current data they had. 10,332 cars along Albany for that stretch. That's an 8% increase since 2019, so roughly 2% a year. That allows us to somewhat forecast what that usage would be like. And just to kind of give you guys an idea of what that number looks like, Omaha for that identical stretch there is about 16,000 cars for 2022. And Kenosha for that similar stretch is about 26,000 cars. So it kind of gives you an idea on the traffic flow for that area.
And will the entrance be on the same road, like where you would turn to go into the Bass Pro? Right now, the only place you go if you turn there is basically the Bass Pro parking lot.
So at this point, excuse me, at this point, we don't have enough information to, to be able to give that to you. I don't know if there'll be a mutual access shared with one of the other parking lots. Likely there will be some sort of interest off of Bass Pro Drive. But we're pretty early on in the stages, you know, trying to get everything set up with the plating.
But we'll be able to look at that as that comes along.
Yeah, this is just the conditional final plat. So, you know, we've got another step to go before the plating is, is, is ready to go. It looks like it's a, the proposed unit's four stories, 103 units, I believe. So, okay.
I'll make a motion to accept item O, approve item O.
I'll second that motion.
If a motion and a second roll call. Item Q is an approval of a conditional plat located off of New Orleans and Olive. Yes, Grant, you want to share with us?
This one's for me as well, yes.
Okay.
So there were a couple of questions about drainage for this property. I will say that there were concerns based out of Pembroke neighborhood, right next door to the west. They've got a couple of, a couple of ponds on their property that right now have some trouble keeping up. I will say that based on the engineering provided by the applicant, that they have tried to over detain that property that they're developing. And according to their numbers, we're looking at a 38% reduction in flow into those ponds. So that's quite a bit better than what they've got going on right now. So. There was another question sent about a gate. There is a gate located along Delmar for the private community to the south. That would be the, the reserve area. And then there was also, the only other thing that was addressed as far as gating was the PUD provides language to provide, it's on page 10 of the PUD. It provides information that the developer intends to put up temporary barricades into the existing subdivision during construction. So.
And that was my main, the detention, which I talked to Assistant City Manager Kenny Schwab about it earlier. And we had some meetings with, with the family, with the citizens of Pembroke Park and even, oh, what's the subdivision to the west? I can't remember. The trails. And because there's been some flooding issues in that area because Pembroke wasn't really, there was issues with their detainment. And so that was the, that was the kind of the promise to those citizens is that we were going to over detain this new subdivision. And I just wanted to make sure that we are on top of that, that we're doing what we said we'd do.
Okay.
All right. Well, I will make a motion to approve item Q. A second.
I've got a motion and a second roll call. All right, moving on to item seven, public hearings, appeals, presentation, recognitions, and awards. 7A, conduct a public hearing regarding the proposed creation of increment district number five, city of Broken Arrow on the Sunset at Broken Arrow Economic Development Project. Nate Ellis.
Good evening, Council. Nate Ellis, Public Finance Law Group. Do we have the... Thank you. Let's see, I can work this from here, right?
Yes.
All right. All right, we are here tonight for the first of two public hearings on the amphitheater project. So we've, we've kind of gone through the process. So I've got a brief presentation and then this is a public hearing, so you can open up for any questions. Jennifer Rush is here, Bob Mudd from Notes Live is also here, so we'll answer any questions the best we can. So a tax increment district is established under the state constitution and the local development act and Oklahoma statutes. And it's an economic development tool that allows a city to create a geographic area where you capture the increment of new tax revenue that's generated as a result of development. Kind of the purpose of the TIF district is you have a proposed development, but it's not going to happen without the TIF district. You create the TIF district, the revenues can be captured and utilized to pay for project costs that are related and necessary to the development itself. It's ultimately created by a city ordinance after the completion of a TIF process. So this is kind of a helpful graphic, I don't think you've seen this before, but it's helpful graphic to visualize. You have an existing tax base, so anytime you have property, whether it's property tax, and here we're just talking about a sales tax TIF. But if you have property tax or sales tax, there's an existing tax base. A TIF does not capture the existing taxes that are being generated within an area. It only create, it only captures that new incremental tax level. So that incremental taxes area, it's kind of rising up, that's what gets captured. Those are the revenues that are utilized to help facilitate the development of the project. And then when it's done, you have an enhanced tax base at a higher level. You're generating more sales tax, you're generating more ad valorem tax, more hotel tax, whatever the case may be. So our process, we have an initial determination of eligibility. We develop a project plan, and the project plan sets out basically the who, what, where, when, why of, of the project. So we can establish a tax district for up to 25 fiscal years. We can capture up to 100% of any local tax revenues that could include ad valorem, sales tax, hotel tax. It establishes the specific boundaries of the district. And so there's two important areas, there's a, there's an increment district, and that's the area we'll see on a map in a minute where we actually capture incremental revenues from. That's where we expect the development to occur, that's where we capture revenues. There's a larger project area, and you'll see this is quite a bit larger than the, the increment district itself. That's the area within which there may be project-related activities. And for example, if there's traffic infrastructure or water lines that need to be brought in, that would be a larger scope of area, there might be work relating to that. Doesn't mean that everything in the project area is going to be torn up. It just means that there may be activities going on at different times relative to the project. It includes what, a description of what the proposed project is, what the proposed infrastructure improvements are, and then the allocation of the TIF revenues that are actually captured. So the first thing you did a few months back is you created a TIF review committee. And so that's comprised of representatives of the city council, the planning commission, and any impacted taxing jurisdictions, plus three at-large representatives that are selected from the community by the, the balance of the committee. And in this instance, we had a fairly small committee because the only taxing entities that are impacted here, the city, who's already represented, and then Wagner County. So Wagner County, Wagner County is a sales tax entity that is participating in this TIF district was, had specific representation on that committee. The TIF did not include members of, or the TIF committee did not include members from the Technology Center, the School District, Health Department, anybody like that, because we're not impacting ad valorem. This is going to have impact, or this is going to have ad valorem value. It's going to generate new tax revenues for those entities, but none of those are being captured as part of this TIF district. So the project plan is reviewed by the committee, and they make findings of eligibility and financial impacts, and make a recommendation. The planning commission of the city also reviews and makes a recommendation to the city. We hold two public hearings, and then once all that's done, then the city can consider an ordinance that actually creates the TIF district and adopts the project plan. So here we are talking about a TIF area that would involve sales tax and hotel tax in and around the Broken Arrow Events Park. So it's at New Orleans and the Creek Turnpike. I'm sure you're all familiar with the Events Park itself. There's a parcel immediately to the north of it, right along the Turnpike, that is densely wooded right now and has been, not been in any service for a long time. That's actually the proposed location for the amphitheater would be there, and I think a significant amount of parking would go on that parcel. And then we also, so that's kind of the big project, is the, this amphitheater project. Again, I mean, if you, if you've got any specific questions relative to that, I'll let Bob handle that. I mean, I can answer basic questions on it, but it's, it's a 12,500-seat amphitheater that's going to bring, you know, large-name concert acts to town and just editorially sounds like a really cool project. So. In and around that area, because of the destination experience that we expect that to be, we anticipate there will be some additional development in and along the commercial lanes, along the major, major arterial roads, and it major interchanges with Creek Turnpike. And so we've projected a very modest amount of development, but that really could be significant, maybe much more so than we've even projected. The term of the TIF would be for the full 25 years, but again, if, if all of the TIF costs are recouped and paid, then the TIF would end early at that point in time. It would capture a portion of the incremental new sales tax revenues. And so we have 100% of the new sales tax that's generated from the amphitheater itself. So that's ticket sales, concessions, merchandise. It would capture 50% of the city's sales tax from anything that's additional development around. So if there's restaurants or hotels that located in the area, those would only be captured 50%. The other 50% would go to the tax, or would go to the city. It would capture 100% of any new hotel taxes that are generated from hotels in the increment district itself. And then it would capture Wagner County sales tax revenue, 100% of that for the first four years. So this year through 2027, then 75% for the next two years, 50% for the next two years, 25% for the last two years. And it wouldn't capture any Wagner County tax revenue after the end of 2033. And so this was something in discussions, they specifically agreed to that. They actually have to formally consent to that. The county commissioners met this morning and they adopted a resolution where they formally approved their participation as part of this. So that, that step is done as well. I don't have on here, forgot, I noticed I forgot to add this, but if you'll recall in the economic development agreement that we did with the Notes Live group back in October, they also agreed to assess a 1% fee-by-agreement surcharge, whatever you want to call it, it's kind of like an additional sales tax, that they would actually collect on all of their ticket sales and concessions and, and merchandising. That is also a part of this revenue stream that would be utilized to pay for the project costs. And then what's a fairly important one, it could be pretty significant. That last one is the Local Development and Enterprise Zone Incentive Leverage Act incentives. So this is a statutory structure that exists kind of in partnership with the TIF structure. And it allows the state to participate in a TIF district when you have an instance where you can demonstrate a net state benefit. And it's typically, typically only used on very large development projects, large tourism projects, something like this. It's kind of a destination where you really anticipate there's going to be a lot of new tax revenue generated for the state itself. I mean, there's anticipation that this will draw in people from out of state that would be attending concerts, and then just, you know, some of the payroll revenue that's generated. And so the, the statutory requirement is, to the extent there is a local contribution, county or city, of sales tax and hotel tax, the state will match that contribution out of their portion of the state, of the state's sales tax that they collect, up to whatever they calculate to be the net state benefit. So again, that has the potential to be a very large number, but again, you know, that would be to the extent that the increment district remains and we're paying off all the project costs. So. So we've talked about the 12,500-seat arena, they project to be open by the end of December next year, which is less than two years away. Capital investment in excess of 71 and a half million. Their projections, based on an economic impact analysis that was done late last year, about 85 point, 85.5 million in annual retail sales. And so we've used that as a basis for some of our TIF revenue calculations. But they also anticipate about 459 construction jobs in the next year and a half to two years. That'll have, you know, almost a $40 million payroll and 141 million. That's not a TIF number, but 141 million net, net economic impact. And then approximately 240 permanent jobs that would be related to the facilities itself. And then another 393 indirect jobs projected to be created in the area as a result of just the ongoing activities. You know, 18.3 million in annual payroll, 211 million in annual economic impact. So this is a significant economic driver for, for project purposes. And again, as we mentioned, there's opportunities for additional development within the increment district area. You know, some in the increment district, and there may be additional beyond the increment district, which is, which is good as well. So a couple of renderings that Notes Live Group has provided of what the amphitheater will look like approximately. So. And you see on this one, the road running along the bottom part, that's the Creek Turnpike. To the left is going north. You see the existing infant, the existing Events Park on the right-hand side. Up at the very top on the right-hand side, you can actually see the, the ballparks, the Challenger Sports Park there. The building that's immediately east above on this, on the picture is the new Broken Arrow Elementary School that's under construction. So that gives you a sense of where we're talking about. And, and you'll notice that, you know, there are some roads that are shown there that are not, don't exist at this point. So there's significant traffic infrastructure that's contemplated as part of this project that I think was really one of the key discussion points with the city is, is the traffic infrastructure, the ability to get people in and out safely, and all the different public safety concerns that get along with that. And there was a lot of effort on the city's part that went into that really very early on in this process, working through all those details. Internal renderings. Let's see, I thought these were really pretty cool-looking pictures. So. So here's the increment district itself. It's purely coincidental that it's the letter J, that just happened. But the reason why there's a lot of property that's, that's carved out, what's carved out in and around that are existing residential areas. It didn't make sense to include them in the TIF district, they're not going to be redeveloped or changed in any way. And what is included are all primarily areas that are already designated in the long-term land use plan for this type of commercial development. So again, the, the, the area kind of picks up the natural development area where we would expect there to be some additional development as a result of this project. And then on the left, you see the red bordered area. That's the, the overall project area, and so that picks up all the different, there's, as I say, quite a bit of traffic improvements that are maybe outside of the increment district itself that'll be completed to help facilitate this, this project. Estimated construction of the various infrastructure that are part of the project costs that would be authorized under this plan, got about 7.2 million for parking infrastructure in and around the, the Events Park. and around the Events Park. Stormwater infrastructure, estimated 2.3 million. Traffic, 10.3 million. Utilities, about a half a million. The land acquisition of the parcel that's immediately north of the Events Park area. Projected engineering and contingencies, so that totals up to 28.45 million. There's some organizational costs that can be reimbursed from TIF revenues. Annual administrative costs, we estimate probably, you know, probably not more than 10,000 a year, just in internal infrastructure, or administrative costs. And then, the financing costs, I know it looks like a really large number. We come up with that for project plan purposes as a, that's kind of like the most inefficient financing that we could possibly do, if we financed the whole thing right out of the gate for 25 years at a really high interest rate, capitalized a couple of years' worth of interest. But, we want to give an overall dollar number as a, you know, kind of a, a not-to-exceed expectation, but we anticipate that, you know, there will probably be an initial financing for some of the infrastructure that needs to go in in a fairly short order, but it won't be the whole thing, and hopefully, that there's revenues that start to flow in fairly quickly, and the remaining projects potentially will be done on a pay-as-you-go basis. Projected TIF revenues, based on primarily the amphitheater, and then, as I say, some modest additional development around that. It's estimated there'll be about 258 million in total sales tax revenues. 97.2 million, which represents about 91 million of city, and about 6 million of county sales tax, would be allocated to project costs. About 7 million, and so, that 7 million represents the 50% not of the amphitheater, the other development. And again, that number could be significantly more, potentially, with a lot of additional development, but that would be allocated to the city. About 29.6 million to Wagner County, again, kind of on the same set of assumptions, but assuming only 100% the first four years, and then, dropping, so they're, and then, they don't contribute any after the first 10 years. And then, the state's portion is about 124 million, so that gives you a sense of the order of magnitude of what potentially could be out there from a matching standpoint. Estimated about 4.3 million in hotel tax revenue. The fee-by-agreements, that one cent that's just on the amphitheater operations, would generate about 23.6 million. And then, again, to the extent that it qualifies for the Leverage Act incentive payments, that could be as much as potentially another 124 million. So, again, that's, that represents a great potential source to help to fray, at the local level, the cost of this TIF, and again, part of the reason why it's advantageous for the city to contribute as much sales tax as it can, and for the county to participate in that, because that adds additional dollars that can be matched. So, we estimate about 125 million in total TIF revenues, and that does not include the Leverage Act money, so it's potentially almost double that number as the potential. And then, about 23.6 million in Ad Valorem revenues. None of that is being captured, this is not an Ad Valorem TIF, I repeat, this is not an Ad Valorem TIF, but it will generate probably 23, 24 million in tax revenues over the term, of which about 15 million of that would go to Broken Arrow Schools. The oversight of the process, the city manager is listed as the person in charge of implementation. The city approves public agreements. Again, you've already approved a significant development agreement with Notes Live already, so that's in place. Assistance in development financing for developers, there may be some components of the project. I'm thinking maybe some of the road improvements, some of the parking improvements, it might make more sense for the developer, in connection with the construction of their facilities, to do those projects, and the city reimburse those costs, as opposed to the city contract directly for those. But again, we'll kind of work through each of those, as makes the most sense. Infrastructure projects will generally all be undertaken by the city, and public construction contracts, as you know, are competitive bidding by the city, and then, you know, city's subject to annual auditing. Impacts on taxing entities, don't know that this will necessarily have a significant increase in population, but certainly, there'd be service demands, and as I said, mentioned before, the city's had a, had significant discussions about the impacts on just the safety of the events itself, and then, the traffic ingress and egress, and how to deal with that. As a destination experience, we expect it'll increase the number of visitors coming to the city, and they're gonna come to the city, and they're gonna find other things to spend their money on while they're, you know, right before, right after concerts. So, we anticipate that to have a positive impact from a tax standpoint. Also expect that to have a positive impact on businesses and in and around the community as well, it's just more dollars are being spent in the community, that's beneficial to everybody involved. So, as I mentioned, we did the development agreement back in October, and kind of part and parcel to that was, a condition precedent of that development agreement was that the city go through this process and ultimately establish a TIF district. The TIF Review Committee met back in early December and recommended approval, the Planning Commission in middle of December recommended approval, I mentioned this morning, the county commissioners voted to approve. This is the first public hearing tonight. The second public hearing will be held during the regular meeting in two weeks, Tuesday, January 16th, at 6:30 PM here, City Council Chambers, and then, we anticipate after that hearing, that we'll have the ordinance on your agenda for consideration at that time. Happy to answer any questions?
So, you bring up, certainly, this is not our first TIF district, and they've served us well, as far as the city of bringing some of our properties up in value. There's not any, at the present time, in all the, this new TIF district, any sales tax generated anywhere at this time, right?
I, I'm not sure if we've determined that finally.
There's not, at least a big amount, I mean, this is gonna be.
I think, I think maybe it's the Dollar General.
It's open, so that'd be the.
Yeah, I think the Dollar General's in there, so it will actually be part of the base, I, I mean, we'll estimate what a baseline is, because they don't have 12 months' history, but we did not, had not anticipated that being part of this, so whatever there is, we'll just exclude it.
Well, my point in that was that we would have the city sales tax, because it is only city sales tax, there's not a lot of properties around there with that as tax, city sales tax.
Yeah, beyond that, I don't think.
So, most of it would all be new, with the exception of maybe the new store. So, it's really gonna, it really benefit the city, and I might just go back to, the amphitheater was in our master plan there for years, so it's not like all of a sudden we come up with a new amphitheater, that amphitheater has been in the plans. Maybe not that big, but it's certainly been there.
Well, yeah, I mean, the concept was talked about as part of the last general obligation bond authorization, so, and that was, that was kind of one of the purposes of the establishment of the Events Park.
Certainly, right.
Absolutely. It's huge benefit to the school systems, even though we're not collecting Ad Valorem, but the sales tax portion of it, it's gonna be huge for them, so, or the property value going up and collecting over. Any other questions? Any discussion? Any questions for Senator Rush or Bob Med? All right. Well, then, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Last time, is there anyone who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Okay, so, Item 7B, presentation by Wagner County engineer Rachel Cooper concerning a Wagner County special election for the intent of repurposing Wagner County sales tax. And then, I'll just let you know, this is for a presentation of their resolutions that they are presenting for Wagner County, and no action from the council is being taken this evening. Welcome.
Good evening, councilors. Happy New Year. It is my pleasure to present to you today. I'm representing the majority vote of the Board of County Commissioners regarding eight propositions that will appear on the March 5th primary ballot. I will go through these propositions in order of resolution number. We don't have proposition numbers for all eight, so I'll just be going by number, and then, proposition numbers will come out at a later time. So, the first proposition is Resolution 50, and it is regarding a county lodging excise tax of 5%. Funds collected will be used by Wagner County in accordance with the language of the proposition to encourage, promote, develop, construct, maintain, repair facilities, trails, access, enjoyment of public spaces, and other recreation throughout Wagner County. This tax would apply to furnished rooms and recreational vehicles parked in RV parks for no more than 30 days. The city of Broken Arrow, city of Wagner, city of Queda, all have lodging tax in effect in their cities, and so, this would only impact those people staying in unincorporated areas. Based on our initial analysis, we're looking primarily at Airbnb and VRBO-type rentals. We do have a hotel and a resort, several RV parks, and a conference center in unincorporated Wagner County that this would impact. And like, as mentioned, this is for a tourism effort. The effort is to provide a fund that would bolster tourism and conduct maintenance in our recreational areas. On the next slide, do I have control of this?
Yes.
Oh, I can't, okay, so, the, okay, so, the next slide shows just a little snip of our principal tourism, which is an old recreational trail. Many people may know of it, it's the Jean Pierre Chautau Trail, is a 59-mile recreational trail established by the Corps of Engineers in the late 70s. It is currently in disrepair and has not been maintained for a number of years, but it is the longest recreational trail in the state, and it is a gem that the county is proud to have and would like to reestablish it, so this fund would be, if passed by the voters, an effort to do so. Moving on.
I had no idea that was there, so.
Yeah. I found that in a comprehensive plan update, so, pretty exciting find. Okay, so, Resolution 139, this is regarding our permanent, making a county roads and bridges sales tax permanent. Currently, we have 0.8% sales tax that goes to roads and bridges. It is on a 10-year renewal. The idea here would be to secure vital infrastructure funding. I put a small pie chart here, it's not the easiest to see, but the larger pies are 2.3 million approximately that go to each district, each maintenance district, out of the sales tax fund. That is 68% of total revenue that can be used for roads and bridges. It constitutes about $11,500 per mile of certified county miles. If this were to be lost, the available funds would reduce to $7,848 per mile. So, we have 864 certified county miles, and $11,500 a mile results in the maintenance to which you are familiar with today. So, the loss of this would be very drastic to the county. In addition, the loss of this fund would also eliminate county engineering, county economic development, and emergency management. They are all funded through the use tax, which is tied to this. If this is not permanent, the potential to bond off of any additional use tax is eliminated. The bond would only be possible for 10 years, and so, that eliminates some potential of funding projects with our current tax base, rather than going out for a vote for additional taxes. So, for those reasons, this is being proposed for permanency. Moving on, just quickly, that 0.8 was a tax already in place. These two resolutions also address taxes that are in place today. Point one is for a sheriff's department operations, making that permanent, and the point one for general county government, which is currently used for our insurance and workers' compensation funds. Those are all tied to the 0.8, so a total of one penny, and they would all be proposed Moving on to Resolution 142. Resolution 142 addresses an existing 0.3 permanent sales tax for fire trust and fire districts. It would divert 0.15 of the tax to the establishment of an ambulance trust. Wagner County relies on neighboring counties and other municipalities to provide ambulance services. Ambulance services, response times are abysmal. You have, in some instances, wait times of over an hour, even in city limits. A responding agency may respond to an unincorporated area, and then, a need would take place within that responding agency's jurisdiction, to which case, the wait would begin. And this effort would be to reduce the wait times and provide a needed public service to unincorporated areas, but also provide ambulance services that would have interlocal agreements with all of our other agencies. So, the goal would not be to reduce any ambulance, but to just enhance our response times and provide higher level of safety for our citizens. Okay, moving on to 143. This is a new temporary sales tax levy proposed for the purpose of creating parking and pedestrian access to the courthouse. It would also allow for some needed renovations in the courthouse. The goal would be a $10 million fund, and the tax would be for 30 years, and it is a 0.125. This is a rendering that was created by an architect that was hired by the county, and if you're at all familiar with the courthouse complex, the courthouse resides on the north side of Cherokee Street, which is State Highway 51, and prior to 2021, the courthouse parking was on the south side of that, and there is a mid-block crossing that allows pedestrian access from the south parking. In '21, a property exchange was completed between the county, the school district, Wagner Independent School District, and the city of Wagner, whereas the county, the resulting exchange, the county received the entirety of the city block. Also, it included facilities that the school district had moved out of when they built their new facility. And so, the project, which was initiated, the concept, over a year ago, was to provide the needed parking and an entry on the north side that would accommodate access to our citizens to easily do their business at the courthouse. The fund would also allow for some improvements, as you can see here, pedestrian access and facility improvements as needed by the offices that reside in the courthouse. Resolution 144, this is a new 0.25 sales tax levy for the purpose of funding a county jail trust. I've clipped out a couple of excerpts from the County Jail and Jail Trust Authority Report, which was prepared for the Board of, or for the Association of County Commissioners, excuse me, and a properly trained, equipped, and professional staff that is held accountable by leadership, that takes a more proactive approach, is the first and best line of defense from excessive judgments, and the use of county general fund as a primary or even secondary source of funding may blur the lines of legal separation. And so, the goal here is to provide some level of separation between the jail and county government. There are several jail trusts in the state. No jail trusts have received a judgment against them. They've settled a few cases in the past, but they've not received any judgments. The Association of County Commissioners is a self-funded insurance, and the counties are afforded a maximum of $2 million of insurance in cases against the county regarding anything, but many of those cases are related to the jail. And so, that fund can run out rather quickly. There are several cases in the state where judgments have been rendered well over $30 million. And so, the idea here would be that a jail trust would create some separation and provide a professional staff that can be paid in excess of what our current staff can be paid, in hopes that that professionalism and that separation would protect us and provide some Resolution 145 is regarding a new 1.25% sales tax levy for the funding of a Wagner County fairgrounds. The goal is to generate $10 million over 30 years. Our current fairgrounds is located in the city of Queda, and it is nearly 50 years old. It is undersized, with poor accessibility, surrounded by residential neighborhoods and Queda schools. The new fairground location, in partnership with the city of Queda, will be located at State Highway 51 and the Muskogee Turnpike, which is centrally located in the county, and would provide adequate space and access for all of our participating cities, including that of the city of Broken Arrow. It will house the OSU extension, it will have exhibit area stalls and conference space. It will have exhibit area stalls and conference space. And the anticipated needed square footage will be seventy-five thousand square feet. I did provide a rendering that was done a few years ago by an architect under a contract with Economic Development. I don't think ours will be so fancy, but it will be a similar type of construction. In conclusion, a combination of seven sales tax propositions will result in a permanent increase of point one-two-five and a temporary increase of point two-five. The county currently has a one-point-three percent sales tax, and it would increase to one-point-eight for a maximum of thirty years, and it would reduce down to one-point-five-five following the completion of the two special projects. The combination of eight propositions, if approved by the voters, would result in an investment in tourism, an investment in criminal justice, an investment in county services, infrastructure and law enforcement, an investment in public safety via the countywide ambulance, and an investment in youth education and agricultural preservation. With me today, I have Commissioner Edwards, and also Commissioner Hanning is in the audience. They may have things they'd like to add or speak upon. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to address them.
Do you guys have any questions? Have you guys, well, I was gonna say no and then... Have you guys held any, like, public hearings or, like, I feel like I just learned about this, so I, and I'm a Wagner County resident, so I was like, wait, what's happening? So have you guys held any public?
Many of these projects have been discussed on public record at the Board of County Commissioners. There have been no public hearings regarding these projects, but that schedule will be created and conducted here in the next sixty days.
Okay. How does that affect, like, you guys going to vote, though?
It's already on the ballot.
Yeah, so it's happening no matter what.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And we have several people who want to speak, but do the commissioners want to add anything?
No, not this time.
Okay. Hanning? Nope? Okay.
I actually would like to say something, and I'm trying to stay as neutral as possible, which is my...
Can you come up?
Which is my legal responsibility. There were a couple of things I'd like to clarity on. I'm not going to get into the details of this because we've already asked in open meeting any background information, studies, how any of these numbers came up. I'm going to talk about only what was presented to me, and it's a matter of public record, so I can. All of this information was presented during a meeting in which I were, was trying to get clarity on the remaining point-seven percent available for Wagner County for a justice center. This incremental increase will prevent what we initially was seeking to get funding for a justice center, no matter how this is diced up. But what I can tell you is that this, all of these, all seven of them, were given to me the morning of the meeting, and I never seen any of this, was talked, asked any input, given any information on, and was asked to vote to approve this with no prior knowledge of it. And I don't know how anybody else could vote on this with having no prior knowledge of any details of this, to come up with these numbers and to tell us that point-eight percent is going to be satisfactory or even enough to maintain roads forever in Wagner County with what we're getting now as we see the growth. We all, you guys as well in Broken Arrow, see the destruction of our roads and how much more it's costing us to fix them. So I don't know where the numbers came from. I'm simply telling you, they were never presented to me.
I'm sorry, sir. Can you introduce yourself? Tell us who you are.
I'm Wagner County Commissioner for District One, James Hanning.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. I apologize.
You're fine.
And thank you for letting me speak.
All right, we have, it looks like three people that want, or two people that want to speak on this. Gary Goodnight?
Most of my concerns are...
Can you come up to the, sorry, sir? Can you come up to the microphone? It has you wanted to speak in opposition. And just let us know your name.
I'm Gary Goodnight. I live in Wagner County, live a reporter. And the commissioner, what he said was the thing that concerned me, is there were no public hearings, there was no information passed on, and these resolutions were voted on by the county commissioners on Monday, and there was no information. And that concerned me. And the comment from one of the county commissioners were, was that, well, it's been on the website all weekend. That is a lot of information to digest over the weekend when you didn't even know it was there. And so we were simply asking to slow roll it a little bit so we could get some public input and let the people know what it was about. And weren't willing to do that. And so that concerns me. It's just the way that it was, the way that it was pushed through didn't seem right to me. If it is something that's good for the county, then why are we hesitant to talk about it in some public hearings or at least make the information available to the public? Well, that's my concern, that some of the proposals seem reasonable to me, but the way that they're being pushed through seem, I'm just not comfortable with that at all. And we talk about transparency of government, and that's what we need. And this is a case where we didn't have it, and thirty-three percent of the county commissioners didn't even know it was going on. So it just, it seems like due process wasn't followed, and that's my concern. I could probably get behind these if we had, I mean, some of the information that Rachel presented tonight seemed reasonable, but that's the first time I've seen it. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And then the next one that wanted to speak in opposition was Doug Longnecker.
Doug Longnecker, Wagner County, resident. So what Mr. Goodnight was saying is absolutely correct. We were actually berated at the county commissioner meeting for the fact that we had not read these, and we were speaking in opposition of them. They were posted on their website four-thirty Friday afternoon. The meeting was nine o'clock Monday morning. We're supposed to know this, the, so we're supposed to spend our whole time, our whole day, waiting for the county commissioners, the county clerk to post something on their website where we can instantly read it, adjust it and analyze it with much less information that was presented to you than what was presented to you today. Now, the whole resolutions were not presented, just a brief outline. This is probably two to three times the information that was presented to us Monday of the county commissioners meeting. Nobody had time to analyze any of this. This was acted on as it was an emergency. It was said that it was highly imperative that this was passed that Monday. It's got to get on the ballot. It's got to get on the ballot so we can bond it, or so we can bond against our point eight. Nobody has presented what these bonds are going to be. So it is imperative that we make a permanent tax of the point eight to, so we can bond against it, and it has to be on March's ballot, but we don't even know what these bonds are supposed to be. So my next point on, that I would like to make, is ten million dollars isn't going to do anything for that courthouse over thirty years. That courthouse is going to absolutely crumble around you if you spend ten million dollars on that and expect that to be your thirty-year plan. The, I don't know if you've been to Wagner County courthouse, but ten million dollars won't touch it. Ten million dollars won't touch seventy thousand square feet of a fairground.
Fairground.
Yeah. Ten million dollars won't touch that over thirty years. This is highly unanalyzed. This has not been, it has not been sorted through very well by any means. And I guess that's all I have to say. I'm yelling it out.
All right, thank you. All right. All right, so we are moving on to item eight, which is citizens' opportunity to address the council. There are none. Item nine, A, is consideration discussion on possible appointment of two city council members and one planning commission member to serve on the new city hall initiative committee. Mr. Spurgeon?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, good evening. I mentioned briefly at the last meeting, after you had approved the contract with Narrate to begin the consulting services, to look at the options for a new city hall, the possibility of having two council members serve as members of the subcommittee made up of probably one planning commission meter, member, and some members of staff. And I just want to share a little bit about what my thought process is and ask for your consideration. This isn't a major initiative. Last time the city did something with regard to city hall, you have to go way back into the eighties and then back into the seventies, and this is the facility we have right now. To look at the options for what is best, council believe is best for a facility, really comes down to, is it possible to do renovations and expansion of this facility, or is there a possibility of a new facility? And that's where you look at this whole process, and there could be three, possibly four phases in this total initiative, with the first phase being what I will call the feasibility or looking at the options, which I just mentioned. The second, once the council decides which option you select, albeit looking at expanding this or a new city hall, then you would have what they call the programming phase to where we will go in and we will actually determine the size of space that we would need and how that spaces will be used, and how the building will lay out, aesthetics, and internal interiors, furniture fixtures, all of those things go into programming, which is quite tedious but a lot of fun, actually, considering you don't do a city hall that often. Then, once the program is completed, then you go into what could be the third phase, which is the design. Actually, you take all the programming and the options that's selected, and then you begin the process of putting together the traditional design and engineering plans necessary to complete the project, and then you do the final phases, the public bid and the construction. I think the council, since this is your building, it would be very helpful to have the council members be a part of the first two phases, of the feasibility or the option phase, and then the programming phase. And it doesn't have to be the same two council members. It could be, I was thinking, as two council members could help look at the options. What the goal is that once we have the consultants help us with the various options, there'll be a presentation to the council members, just like Nate gave his presentation with the pictures and the slides showing the justifications. Council makes a decision, and we still keep the selection, the subcommittee, it could be rotated amongst two others, to actually look at the programming, and then there's going to probably need to be multiple approvals by the council because I want to make sure council is deeply involved in exactly how everything's going to be laid out. But it's just like a number of other committees that we've created over the last seven or eight years, where you get in and get out. You know, we're going to get in, we're going to focus for a period of time. The first phase could just really be a few meetings because I want the consultants to hear the council's thoughts and visions about space, what we're looking for, representation for the community and so forth. I know, for example, we need additional community rooms. There's been a need for some of that, larger council chambers, all kinds of needs I've heard for eight years. And then actually, they're going to make and look at the different options that we give them, and they'll come back with a recommendation. Ultimately, council will decide exactly which one to pick. Then we would move in at some point, probably later this year, early next year, into phase two, which is the programming. Then from the programming to design, design to public construction, with the goal of hoping sometime in early 2026, we would actually go out to public bid based on current timing. And so I want to get your thoughts and see if you're interested. If so, then I can have Grant work with the planning commission to get at least one, if not two, come in, a planning commission meter, members to be on there, and we can get started probably sometime in the next month or two.
I'd love to be on the... I've rolled off of a couple of committees, so I have a little bit of...
I'd like to be on the committee.
Okay. The first committee, I mean, first concept, everybody's okay, but the concept of, okay.
Well, I think we need, I think we need a committee. I think we need either, we need a bigger, a larger area, you know, for the council chambers. We need a community area. It's going to be difficult to put it, you know what I mean, in this. I do know that part of this building was built for four stories. I don't know exactly which part because it was added on several times, but I think that that's something that can look at. Maybe you could do that. You know, personally, I have my feelings of where I think it needs to go or do, but I think it needs to be dealt with. It needs to be expanded for several things. We, look how many times we've run into crowds in this room and here. So I'm certainly for us looking at it. Counselors, whoever wants to be on it, you know, as long as it's presented to the whole council, that'd be great.
So my plan would be, based on just hearing from so far, I mean, anybody else wants to weigh in, please do, is the next meeting, we'll have an item in there for actually for you to chance to consider, and then to point two of your own to serve on that. It'll be the first phase will be the options. And then, once you make a decision later this year, probably towards the end of the year, I'll move into phase two, and then I'll present another request, and the same two can be reappointed, or there may be two others. I can tell you is, you know, both of these are very, very important phases because, like I said, we only do this once, I mean, I've done city halls twice in my time, and so it's not something you do that often. So it is a little bit of work, but it is a lot of fun, and it's something that's going to be for the people and for the employees that do business here, and it need to be, you know, to represent our community. So I think this is an exciting initiative.
Sure. I think it's very important because as our city continues to grow, we do things to make sure our infrastructure, our city is set for that growth. We haven't done anything for the city hall. And as a lot of you know, that we have parts of our city staff in various locations throughout the city, and it would be great to be able to bring some of those in, and it would help with efficiency and, I believe, running of the city.
And I just want to mention, what I love is the transparency of it, that we are coming out way ahead of when the project will actually happen, and allowing a process so that everyone can see what's happening and everyone feels confident of where the money's coming from and why. I mean, anybody that came to, has come to city hall in the past few years, I mean, we've had many nights, and we had a time we had to go to a hotel because we couldn't fit everybody here. I mean, that shouldn't happen. That's not representative of who we are as in Broken Arrow. So I think it's, this is a really good thing that we needed to happen long before now, actually.
And as we started on committees, we've always been able to, you know, interact, you know what I mean, in council meetings, present it, so really, it doesn't bother me, whomever's on that committee. I know the two that wanted to be able to start with, we do a great job, but that will all be informed, you know what I mean, as we go through. So I'm very comfortable with that.
Well, I was saying, the second phase, and Kenny's got a lot of experience in this, we get into certain design and programming, it's going to take multiple, because I'm not going to move too forward until we make certain presentations. I mean, we'll get to there next year, but most important is deciding an option. What does council want to do? Do you want it to expand this, and how would we go about expanding it? Do you want to redo the facade? Or do we want, we'll probably have a couple of other options about what it would look like to build a new city hall somewhere down here or somewhere else in the downtown, because I'm a supporter of keeping the city hall in the downtown area for many, many reasons. We need to look at those and see what the estimate may be, and then the committee come back, and then the council will decide, and then we'll go forward with phase two.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Item nine B is consideration discussion and possible approval of and authorization to execute amendment number one of the interlocal agreement between Wagner County and the City of Broken Arrow concerning identification, exchange of ownership, construction, maintenance, operation, and financial responsibilities for infrastructure.
Excuse me, Mayor. Were you going to take a vote on that last item?
There was no, it said to...
Possible appointment.
Or are we...
Do you want it? I guess, I guess, I was kind of getting ahead of myself.
I thought, but you said we'd do it next meeting, so. But we can do it.
Yeah, it's fine. I was a little ahead of myself. I was going to discuss it and not be presumptuous, but it's on there, so if there's two that are interested, then we can do it.
I'll make a motion, or you can go ahead and tell.
I'll make a motion that Debra and Lisa be appointed to that committee.
Okay.
And excitedly, they'll do a good job.
I'll second.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. We'll call.
Thanks, Curtis.
Yeah, good catch.
You guys can go to work tomorrow.
Yeah. All right. I don't have to repeat all that, do I, on nine?
Yeah, I want to, no. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Counselors, Mr. Spurgeon. So the item before you is an amendment to a previous interlocal agreement that the City of Broken Arrow entered into with Wagner County about our border streets. I believe we entered into it in July or August of 2022. Now, a border street is where both jurisdictions come together. You'll remember many of our streets, Broken Arrow's on one side of the street, Wagner County was on the other side. So who owns it? Who operates it? Who maintains it? Who pays for that? This agreement that was entered into in 2022 actually defines which inventory. Is it Broken Arrow's inventory, or is it Wagner County's? With respect to the amphitheater and the support, we got into some discussions... we got into some discussions with the staff and the, and the commissioners and, um, thought it was best that the border streets that really kind of run along the Vince Park, so that's a hundred and first, New Orleans on our side, but hundred and first from roughly 220th, 221st to Evans Road, which is 225th, about four or five blocks is in Wagner County's inventory. The intersection of Evans Road, 225th and a hundred and first is in their inventory. And then Evans Road from a hundred and first to the highway 51 is in their inventory. With this amendment number one, it would bring those roads into our inventory. It's probably about a mile, maybe a little bit more. Uh, some of that is actually under construction right now, which is a hundred and first and the intersection. Wagner County is a sponsor and they have some federal funds, STP, and they're actually widening that road all the way down to Oneida Road eventually and all the way up to highway 51 through that. Evans is not a part of that widening. The portion that we're talking about is not a part of that right now, but the rest of it's under construction. If this is approved, we would go ahead and take over any maintenance effective, the date of the agreement, even though it's under construction. Um, once it's constructed, there would be a maintenance bond on those portions. So we would work with Wagner County and/or ODOT if there was any issues. So we don't see that as a problem in any way, shape or form. Now, one thing I do want to point out is there's an attachment, exhibit A, that's actually shows the border streets. I think if I remember correctly, blue is Broken Arrow and red's Wagner County. One of the things that we did in this amendment, um, is actually put the, the dots on the intersections. We had some wording in the agreement and it was kind of difficult to figure it out. So ingenious, let's use dots to show who is responsible for those intersections. Green's Broken Arrow and red's Wagner County. I would like to point out that the county commissioners, it was presented to them today at their, uh, regular scheduled meeting and they did approve it with one caveat and we completely agree with that. If you see Kenosha and it's kind of in the middle of the screen right there, um, all the way down to the east end, there's a red dot. That's Oneida, uh, sorry, Oak Grove Road, 273rd, Kenosha is 71st Street. If you're familiar with Broken Arrow, that's four lanes and it transitions back to two as you head to the east and there's a flashing light there. We agreed in 2022 to take that intersection and the flashing light. Wagner County really doesn't have the traffic ability that we do in-house. Made perfect sense. This, uh, exhibit shows it as Wagner County's. So, uh, today it was approved at the county commissioners meeting with the caveat that we need to change that to a green dot. We completely agree and would request that we, um, approve the agreement with that caveat that that intersection falls to the city of Broken Arrow.
Now, over, uh, of eighty-first, Midway to Oak Grove is also going to become red dots or green dots, right?
Well, they had the same comments that you did. Once all of that steps through, when we go, so her question was Houston, eighty-first, just east of Midway, uh, 257th, 79th. I got all three names. How about me? Um, as you go east on Houston, right now, uh, most of that's Wagner County. We're talking about bringing some of that into our inventory. And when we step through all those processes, we will change this map to reflect that. You are correct.
Yeah, you can tell when you cross over from city. Sorry. There's no more Wagner County. So, oh, sorry. Oh, sorry, sir.
That's Mayor Wimpy.
They need to hear it, so it's fine.
A question is the Evans and New Orleans, is it going to be, you know?
Go ahead, ask it.
Is it going to be a roundabout?
Rachel, is that going to be a roundabout?
That's what I've heard. So we're taking a roundabout into our.
Good evening again. Yes, ma'am. That's right. Yeah. One of, one of two, one of two. There's another one at Oneida.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's right.
So yes, our first roundabout will be built by Wagner County and ODOT, but we will take that in.
Okay.
Are you guys going to build that before Tulsa County builds their four?
Yes, she is. They're underway.
I do have my roundabout on Norfolk, but this will be, this will be a roundabout made by Wagner County. So.
It's a little.
Do good. Do good. Roundabout. I'm a roundabout fan. I'm the only one. So out of the entire city. It's going to be great.
When we inherit these, um, projects, like they're working on it, they're going to do the roundabout. Are we just still kind of making sure it matches to what we want? Yeah, our standards are.
Good question. This is actually being funded by Wagner County and, uh, federal. So ODOT's involved. So it's actually going to be ODOT standards.
Okay.
And so, which are our standards as well. And they do have inspection on it as it goes through the construction.
And then we would just be responsible going forward to maintain.
That is correct.
Okay.
I do believe that it's really important that, uh, I mean, this is an important document, but it's important that we work closely with the counties. You know, we've done that with Tulsa County and we're doing that with Wagner County. And, and Wagner County is really growing. As you know, we have that committee that we're looking at. So anything that we can do, you know what I mean, to work together to give us both information. And, and this will be important. You got to keep track of the dots. In case I have a citizen call me, Kenny, where's this dot at? Uh, but I think to me, the most important thing is being able to work with the counties and you know what I mean, make that a, a really nice area out there in Broken Arrow and in Wagner County.
I guess that was kind of my point too, is I, I want us to stay engaged like during the process and then when we inherit it, then we'll know what we're inheriting, I guess.
That, that brings up another question I'd had. I don't think we knew for sure. Is there going to be sidewalks, that area that, that Wagner County's doing east of our, where what we've already done by the Vince Park?
Are they going to continue?
Are they going to continue the sidewalks?
I'll let Rachel answer that.
Uh, yes, ma'am. Uh, the sidewalks are on the north and they will continue past Evans and they'll continue even farther. Um, so there, there will be, it's a four foot, um, concrete sidewalk and they'll have pedestrian crosswalks around the roundabout and everything. It'll be, it'll be the greatest roundabout in Broken Arrow.
Love it.
Yeah. We have some others coming too, if you'd like to take.
You're on, you're on record, Rachel. Just want you to remember. Greatest roundabout. I like it.
I think she's working us, but that's okay.
All right. Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion. We approved and authorized execute amendment number one of this interlocal agreement.
I'll second that motion.
Move a motion.
If I may, with the caveat.
Stand by.
With the caveat to, um, correct the intersection map?
Yes.
Okay.
With that caveat.
Nope.
Move a motion in a second with the caveat. Roll call. All right. Thank you, sir.
Tough cry.
All right. All right. Uh, 10A, uh, preview ordinances, consideration, discussion and possible review of an ordinance amending Broken Arrow Code of Ordinances, Chapter Five, animals and set for adoption. Looks like Mr. Teener is on the, do you want to come down?
I can introduce Captain Teener. As you, as you may, Trevor Dennis, City Attorney, uh, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, councilman, Mr. Spurgeon. Uh, several great questions were asked at the last meeting regarding this ordinance. Uh, we have Captain Teener and Tim Bonai from the animal control, uh, to answer some of those questions. So with that, I'll turn it over to them. Specifically, the two issues that we had were, uh, talking about, uh, mandatory spay or neutering the animals. And there's also an issue regarding, uh, registration of our cats and dogs. Uh, one of the changes that you'll see in this ordinance, ordinance versus what we had, the last ordinance was we had removed the requirement for the registration of the cats and dogs. We determined that that was initially, uh, imposed so that we could confirm, uh, rabies vaccinations. Uh, you know, this has evolved since we originally had those registrations. So now our animal control officers can ask for the tags and the, and the, and the proof from the, the veterinary services. Uh, but that still leaves a question of enforcement, possible enforcement changes on the spay or neutering. So with that, I'll turn it over to our animal control experts.
Okay. Captain Teener, chief.
There's three animals.
Yeah. Bringing them all down.
Yeah. Mayor, vice mayor, Mr. Spurgeon. Uh, I'm Chief Perryhill. This is Captain Teener. Uh, Captain Teener is second line supervisor over the animal control shelter. So I've posed all these questions to him. So I think he can answer most of that. And we have a subject matter expert in the audience. If we need to bring him up for anything follow-up, I'll turn it over to Captain Teener.
All right. Council, I appreciate you giving this opportunity to discuss this. Uh, the mandatory spay neuter, uh, ordinance, the intent of this is simple. It's to lower the population in our shelter. Uh, we're currently, for the last three quarters of 2023, we're bringing in approximately 80 dogs every month and we're running a daily average of about 40. We have 44 kennels. There are days that we are over 44. So then we're using, uh, quarantine kennels if they're available. We're doing what we have to do, uh, to take care of those animals. That is the, the goal of the animal shelter. So the, the idea of this, uh, is not proactive enforcement. It's reactive enforcement. That's not something I like to say as a police officer in Broken Arrow. We like to be proactive, but this is definitely reactive. Uh, you know, a good example would be, uh, the police department cannot stop a vehicle, uh, for no reason, just to check the status of your driver's license. Uh, animal control would not be knocking on doors to check the status of spay neuter, uh, of animals owned in our city. Uh, if they had a chance to come in contact with an animal via animal large or a vicious animal call, they would then check the status of spay neuter and either issue a warning or cite them for that.
I think, um, one of the questions, uh, Citizen had for me to, to check on was our ordinance says that, that they need to be, uh, spayed or neutered by six months. And a quick Google search and we know everything on the Google is, is to be truthful, but it says nine to 18 months for like large dogs. So like there was a discrepancy in, at the age of the dog and the size of the dog. And so I'm not sure if you have any answer for that.
What made you decide on six months? Maybe that's what we needed.
So I, I'd probably let Tim speak on that. Uh, our vets that we contracted the, at the shelter, uh, state six months. Certainly there's always going to be exceptions to that rule and, and we have put a provision, our legals put a provision in the ordinance for us that if a veterinarian states that, that it needs to be later, as long as they can put that, uh, in writing and confirm it, uh, we have no intent on taking enforcement action on that.
So what about the dogs that like say are, uh, like, like you breed your dog or something like the registered dogs that you can breed? And so you're not obviously wanting to, but it gets out obviously, but what is there?
So, so are you talking about commercial breeding to, to breed and sell?
I guess, yes.
Yeah. So commercial breeding is already going to be an, an issue in Broken Arrow. Uh, this, this is not to address that issue. What this is really addressing is, uh, a very small percentage of our population, quite honestly. So we have some repeat offenders that show up with a litter of pups or kittens and say, hey, voluntary surrender. And that's why we're taking in 80 dogs a month is for reasons like that. Uh, you know, that, that's a lot of dogs in a month. And if we can curb that kind of activity and, you know, give folks a reason to, uh, take a little better care of their animals and be responsible, like 99 plus percent of the citizens in the city are, then that's going to be a win for the shelter.
So like when someone shows up like that, do you guys say, bring me the mom of this dog and like let's?
So you're, if this ordinance was to pass, how we would address that? Is that, was that your question, ma'am?
Well, yeah, like.
Right. So if we, if we have someone show up with a, with a litter of animals, uh, yes, we're going to ask, you know, where, where's the, the dog that just had these pups?
Yeah.
And, you know, people can lie, you know? Uh, we get lied to every now and then in law enforcement. They can say, I just found him on the side of the road. And, uh, you know, there's, there's not much we can do to further that. So we can't write a perfect ordinance. Legal can't write a perfect ordinance. Uh, we're just trying to do something to, uh, to lower the number of animals we're taking at the shelter.
Yeah, we only have dominion control over the animals that show up in the shelter. So, you know, we try to limit that. Uh, you have to be a resident of Broken Arrow. You know, we try to take some active steps to reduce that.
Sure.
If a dog was to get out and the, and the, and the animal control people pick that dog up and look at his tag, go to the, where he, his owner and go from there, does he have to be, or she have to be fixed before, uh, they can get it? Are they in trouble? They're not given a ticket for that.
So we're not, we're not going to fix any.
Guys, I'm talking above my head.
We're not going to force any medical procedures. Uh, we're, we're going to have the option to issue a citation and then hopefully that would, uh, in turn encourage them to come in compliance with the ordinance if it was to pass. Does that make sense? If we were to take a dog in and have it in our custody, we would not actually, uh, have our vets, uh, do a, you know, execute a spay or a neuter on an animal before we give it back. We're not going to hold that animal hostage.
But every animal we adopt out has been spayed or neutered before it's released out to the public. So either the pet being surrendered or adopted out will be spayed or neutered before it leaves the shelter.
So that'll be part of the law. It'll have to be spayed or neutered.
That's currently part of the ordinance.
That's what they do already.
Right. But if we had an animal at large that we picked up and the animal came to pick their animal up and it wasn't fixed, we could issue a citation, but we wouldn't actually take any action with our vets or force them, uh, to have their animal fixed.
And citations up to $500 is that?
Up to 500, yeah. Class C offense. Uh, it hasn't been set yet what that would be. Generally, uh, our citations do not start at $500. So it would just be the ceiling.
So I'm very, very happy. I've been, I have wanted to get rid of the licenses for pets since I became a city counselor in 2019, when I found out that that was actually a thing.
We had seven permits.
I had no idea. And so the part in red where it's, it's talking about adequate shelter, that's also a new part to the ordinance as well.
Blame it said shelter before. This just defines what shelter is with the floor and the walls, the ceiling and, and the proper size for the animal itself.
Okay. Cause I'm all for that. I absolut, I mean, y'all, y'all probably know how I feel about this. I, we can't, we can't mandate that people have common sense. I mean, I, you know, I wish we could. It's, but I'm all for spay, spay, neuter your animals. We always do. I mean, honestly, every animal we've ever had has been a, a rescue dog. So they're spayed or neutered when you get them. And, you know, you pay for that when you, when you rescue them. But I think about, I mean, there's reasons why we don't, um, spay or neuter canines. I mean, our police dogs. There's, there's reasons why, um, people don't want their animals neutered. Um, I know people that have very strong opinions about it and they, even though, you know, they don't want their dog to be mean or vicious, they, um, without getting into, I mean.
Don't say it.
Yeah, I know. I, I could say it again tonight.
Please do.
And so, but I just, there are people, there are reasons people don't want to neuter, especially their male dogs. And I don't think I have the right to tell them they have to do that. I mean, now, yes, if they have a dog that's continuously getting out, I mean, and it is, you know, and I understand dogs, they do their thing. I mean, they want to get out when they have all their parks. And so, but you know what? That isn't, I know. It's, it is what it is. It's like, you know, I, I, I don't, y'all are making me talk about this, so I'm going to talk about it. Um, it's super exciting. Um, but yeah, I just, I'm, I'm against requiring that someone do it. I think they should. And, but for me to tell somebody their reason for not neutering their animal is wrong, I just, I don't, I don't think it's my place to tell them that.
So technically, if the dog never gets out, we never know that answer. Secondly, the ticket is encouragement for them to have their dogs spayed or neutered. And if they choose to pay the ticket, they can just pay the ticket. But the second order of this is when the dog gets out, the dog procreates when it's out in the community.
Right.
And that creates a problem for our staff to have to care for those dogs. In some cases, euthanize those dogs. And so it's not necessarily the dog owner, that the one dog gets out. It's what happens to the rest of the community and it creates a health and safety problem for everybody else.
So can you, uh, somebody touch on what is the process for those who want to breed their boutique dogs, et cetera?
Ken, what are you up for this? I'm going to get into the weeds here.
Just so people know, there, there are options.
Sure. Uh, Tim Bonai, animal control manager. So, uh, actually currently in the city of Broken Arrow, we do not have, uh, a breeder's permit or a breeder's, uh, exception. The hobbyist permit that we have allows for, uh, those that have maybe show dogs, hunting dogs, things like that to be exempt from that, uh, spay or neuter ordinance. But we do not encourage or, uh, promote commercial breeding of animals.
Okay. Thank you.
And the efforts for the sterilization of the committees.
Sure. So, um, there are several communities, uh, in this, in the area that already have a spay and neuter ordinances that mirror kind of what our ideal is, uh, such as Tulsa, Claremore, Owasso, Sand Springs. They all have spay and neuter ordinances already in place. We're just asking for, um, this to be considered as another tool that we can use in animal control to help control our population.
Do you think that people, instead of bringing in their litters, because now if they bring in a litter, now they're going to get asked, like, is your dog, like, where this, where did this litter come from? Or, you know, where's mama? Where's daddy? Whatever. Um, are they just going to start dumping their litters?
Well, as, as captains, uh, pointed out that, you know, there is already, already a high probability that they may or may not tell the truth anyway when they're, when they're surrendering an animal or dropping off an animal. So, um, the shelter may end with the animals regardless of the passage of it.
We're going to pick up any animal that's on the side of the road regardless of how it got there and be as human. And be as humane as possible. That's, that's the mission of the shelter.
Right. I mean, I think we're doing an excellent job. And I just, I have a lot, I mean, I'm against a lot of mandates. And so this is just one of those things where I don't feel comfortable with it, just my personal beliefs. I don't, I don't feel comfortable telling someone they have to do this.
To me, one of the things too is that I want to make sure our citizens can go out and walk and not worry about getting dog bit, you know, as they walk along. So my concern in all of this is that make sure if a dog does get out, is that a fine is there? You know what I mean? That they be fined because I don't want the dogs, because I can tell you 30 or 40 years ago, a captain can tell you that also, we had dogs running all over the city. So there was a problem, you know what I mean, with that.
Vaccinations is one of those things that's not a proactive enforcement for the animal shelter staff. So we wrote, what, 150 something citations last year for people that didn't have their dogs vaccinated? Is that correct?
We issued 156 citations for no proof of current rabies, along with 30 citations for running at large.
So along the same lines, you know, we're not only going to come and contact the dog if it's loose, and we're not going to know if it's not vaccinated until we have custody of that dog. And if they don't show proof, it'd be the same thing for the sterilization.
But that's just what I'm concerned with. You know, my main concern with the animals is making sure our public are able to walk our sidewalks and streets, you know, without worrying about dogs coming up and scaring them or biting them.
I'll add to that. You know, 30 citations doesn't sound like a lot. Two and a half a month for animal at large, we take many, many more calls than that. We have to be able to contact the owner or observe the violation to be able to write that ticket.
Okay.
Our live release is in the 90s, right?
Yes, our current live release is in the 90s, 90% rate, which is, which is great for a municipal shelter. However, like, like we said, the amount of animals coming into the shelter is where this spay and neuter ordinance would hopefully help have an impact.
Yeah, we keep them as long as we can.
Yeah, we do our best to keep them as long as we can.
Far longer than than our own rules state. So we, we never euthanized as early as we could.
We do have one citizen that wants to speak, so we'll bring Angela Leiter up to speak. And then she may have, we may have some questions, further questions for you.
Good evening, Mayor Wimpy. Ladies and gentlemen of the council and Mr. Spurgeon, I'm Angela Leiter, fellow resident of Broken Arrow. I strongly oppose adoption of the proposed amendments to the 16-page animal ordinance as it is currently worded. I want to address the concerns I have with a portion of the proposed ordinance amendment, amendments. Specifically, the portion of the proposed ordinance that will assess a class C fine for failing to sterilize your dog prior to six months of age. First, I would ask what business it is it of the government to tell me as a responsible pet owner when or if I must sterilize my dog? I can certainly see the need for rabies shots, leash laws, sanitary housing, noise abatement. But this provision seems to be another solution, another government solution looking for a problem. This is an extreme solution for what is not a problem. And of course, this doesn't apply to the local government's animals or to those that can afford the expenses of a hobbyist permit or statements from the vet. As written, there is no exception for an owner concerned about the health of their pet, so I would be forced to either harm my pet by compliance or subject myself to fines to protect my health, my pet's health. Another question I have is how was this six-month timeframe determined? Well, they just shared that with us. It's the vets that the animal shelter uses. But as an owner of a large breed female dog, my breeder recommended letting her go through at least three heat cycles, so around two years, before even considering getting her spayed. The reason provided by the breeder was to ensure that my dog receives full benefit from her body's hormones released over that time that directly affects her development in many areas, but particularly in her mature joint development. When I discussed this with my vet at Good Shepherd here in Broken Arrow, Dr. Wolf agreed and said that sterilizing her too soon could have very negative consequences on her development. It is extremely concerning that this ordinance has placed this arbitrary six-month date without any real consideration of the consequences on the animal. You are concerned about overpopulation, but it does not seem that this part of the ordinance has considered the very real and negative impact on animal health. This is best an area for the government to back out of and allow major medical procedures, surgeries caused at the vet in Broken Arrow for $500. Be left to owners after consultation with their vets and breeders. I implore you to reconsider and delete the proposed amendment wording. Please keep your focus on more serious crime and issues we have in this beautiful city. You've admitted that you can't enforce, and these amendment ordinance are detrimental. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you guys have anything to add?
I love some, I love when citizens come and speak.
I know, so do I.
Thank you. I would point out that our proposed amendment in Section C does give allowances for medical conditions or recommendations from a vet if it would be unsafe or imprudent to actually perform the sterilization at that six-month timeframe. We do give allowances for that. They just have to show that it is medically recommended to wait, and that would be an appropriate exemption.
Well, the six-month thing, I think, is way, I, I mean, I don't like this whole section at all about the sterilization. I'm against it. But the six-month thing, I, it makes, I actually had somebody that she said she contacted five veterinarians today. I was hoping she would come. And five out of five told her, if I could read it. Now I can't find it. But five out of five that she talked to said that six months was too early. Having larger dogs fixed at six months isn't recommended. And nine to 18 months is what the recommended is. But, and so that, I mean, I don't, I don't understand how we come up with the, came up with the six-month thing. Because I've never heard that, actually. I've never, I've had.
Our vet, I mean, that's fine understanding.
That's, that's from our contracted vets. It's certainly something we can revisit and research further for possible amendment.
Well, as long as you have a, a vet that recommends differently, your, your, your ordinance says that you're willing to do that as long as it's done at that particular time, whether six months or two years. Is that correct?
Exactly.
Yeah, we have two vets that are contracted with the, with the shelter. One does the sterilizations and one does general welfare, checkup on all the animals that go in. And so that's not a number that we came up with. It's a number from a vet, and that's why they're the exception.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Different dogs, different timeframes.
I know, like, like, so we, we're a Chihuahua family, so we have tiny dogs. And so don't, don't make fun of us.
It's not a dog.
It is a dog, and they're very precious. But they're tiny. And our, our vet actually recommended not getting ours taken care of because of the side effects that could happen from it. So, so I'm on record saying my dog is fine.
You can get a note from your doctor.
I can get a note.
You can get a note from your doctor and be okay.
Yeah. That's, it's like, you can give the government a note from your doctor to tell you.
What to do with my dog.
You don't have to have your doctor.
Okay, great.
I don't.
Okay.
I'm, I'm being, I'm being very sarcastic, but I'm not being sarcastic. That is what we're doing.
Yeah.
We're saying you can, I can go to my doctor and make a decision about my dog and give the government a note from my doctor. Wow, that sounds very big brother. I don't like it. I don't like it. So, anyway.
Any other questions we can answer?
Any other questions we can answer?
Like the other stuff?
Yeah.
Hey, we got rid of the license requirement that nobody was, nobody was adhering to anyway. That's good. That's a good thing.
Okay. Well, there could be a motion to approve without that.
Well, I, I, I will make a motion to approve the, the ordinance that removing anything that has to do with sterilization of dogs or cats.
Vice Mayor, if I could clarify, that's what the whole purpose of the preview is for, is to get your input if there's any changes that you want to see.
My motion to.
Actually, the next step, if you are interested in adopting anything, would be to set it for final approval.
Okay, so we have to approve all of it or go back?
No, ma'am. You can direct us to put the ordinance on for final adoption with any amendments or changes that, that you'd like to stay.
Okay. So can I, can I make the motion? Okay, I want to make sure I'm saying it right. I can make a motion to put it on the agenda for, on the agenda for final adoption minus the portion about sterilization of dogs and cats?
Yes, ma'am. If that's, if that's the motion.
That is my motion.
That would be, that's understandable.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? I will second that motion. We do have a second. Motion and a second. Roll call. Okay. Because it's backwards, so I was like, okay.
So at the next council meeting, we will have this ordinance minus Section 5-5 on for your consideration to vote to make it final. And so, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you, guys. All right. Item 11A, consideration discussion on possible adoption of ordinance number 3814 and ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Broken Arrow approving PUD 984-2023, generally located one quarter mile north of Houston Street and Elm.
Good evening again. Yeah, so this item is the, excuse me, to adopt the ordinance for the Dallas Street multifamily flats, located just over here on Dallas Street, east of Elm. Do you have any questions or concerns?
I do not. Anybody have any questions?
I will make a motion to adopt ordinance number 3814.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call. All right. 11B, consideration discussion of possible approval of emergency clause.
Make a motion to accept the emergency clause.
I'll second that.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call. All right. Remarks and inquiries by governing body members. Just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
I feel like 2024 is going to be an exciting time. So anyone else have any items?
I wanted, I do want to say something. And there are a couple of things, you know, hearing from Wyner County, and it just, it made me appreciate, just, because I never feel like I come to the, to a meeting and don't know, haven't had plenty of notice about what we're voting on. And I feel like we really do allow, just like tonight with this ordinance, allow our citizens to speak and allow just very transparent communication. And I think in general, that's all our citizens want.
Yeah.
They want to feel like they're part of the process. They want to feel like they're represented. And it makes me want to cry, because I really do feel like that we all try to do that. And I think we do a really good job in our city, and I'm really proud of that. So that's all.
Thank you.
Yes, sure.
I'm not, I'm not following that.
All right.
I'm good.
We do not have an executive session, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call. All right. I call the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority meeting to order. Roll call.
Green.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Gillespie.
Here.
Wimpy.
Here.
And are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Sorry.
There are no public hearings, appeals, presentation, recognitions, or awards in general authority business. 6A, consideration discussion on possible award of the lowest responsible bid to Cherokee Pride Construction and approve and authorize execution of a construction contract for Freeport Street from Birch to Main Street and Main Street from Algen Street to Midway Avenue. Wow. Waterline improvements.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Trustees, General Manager. This is a project just to replace the water lines in Old Town. We have slowly been replacing those over the last few years, and we'll continue to do that until they all get replaced. This is about four blocks, I think, that we're doing. We sometimes will do these in-house, but this has some bores underneath Main Street. So to try to avoid disrupting anything down there, we bid it out. And we don't always put these on council, but with this being on Main Street, we just wanted to give you guys notice so you knew when you were driving down and saw construction, what kind of was going on. But if you have any questions, I can answer those.
Okay. Any questions or discussion?
So since we're hiring an outside company to do the boring underneath, and it won't be tearing up our streets or all of the landscaping that's already out there, it'll...
Right. We are trying to minimize any of that impact that we can on this by boring it.
I'll make a motion to approve. Have a motion and a second. Roll call. All right. Are there any remarks from governing body members? Manager?
I do have one thing, Madam Chair, is Thursday, the work on the new bridge over County Line Road, over Highway 51 begins. And it's going to be about two months of actually going down to one lane on each side to accommodate putting in the beams. So we'll be putting out information. There'll be information on board. But as I mentioned earlier today, I mean, it's going to be a couple of months of inconvenience, weather permitting, to, for the safety of the workers. There won't be any problem being able to go north and south, down County Line continuing. But the work on, on the bridge is beginning, which is great because we're really about six months or less from that project being completed. So I just wanted to make sure, buddy, you're aware of it, but I'll, we'll be putting out information about it. But this is a very important project between the state, the county, and the federal, I'm sorry, the federal government, the city, and the, and the, and the city.
Yep.
And I'm very excited to tell you that.
All right.
That's all.
All righty. There is no executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second that motion.
Motion and a second. Roll call. Call the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority to order. Roll call.
Green.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Gillespie.
Here.
Wimpy.
Here.
Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call. We have no, we have no public hearings, appeals, presentation, recognitions, or award. No general authority business. Any remarks from governing body members? None. Are there any remarks from City Manager?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just want to acknowledge how much I appreciated Nate's presentation and the, the detail that was in it in terms of something that is very complicated. And I just appreciate all that he put together and Jennifer Rush's help in making sure that all information. I want to thank the county, Wyner County Commissioners who voted unanimously today to pass the resolution in support of the TIF. I want to thank the TIF Commission that you created, and we've still got it through one in a public hearing, but there was a lot of discussions. And just a reminder that the informational meeting we have regarding the partnership is one week from tonight, January 9th at 5:30 out at NSU.
Okay.
So I have.
All right. There is no executive session. Move to adjourn.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Well, that was good.
Good job, man. Roll call.
I got your dog licenses?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for being here.
Good job.
No spay and neuter. Check. Good to see you.
Very nice day. Thanks for our...
You're here, Rachel.
Yes.
You got it. Appreciate all you...